This is just trying to explain.
And you want me to...
This is good?
Yeah, yeah.
Are you guys...
No, no, I'm not standing here.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, you guys are good now. I wanted to...
Turn to the left, turn to the left.
Everyone, we're gonna begin swearing in of Mayor-elect Richard Ulrich.
I state your name.
I, Richard Ulrich.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I would discharge my duties of this office with fidelity.
Great.
If I could add, ladies and gentlemen, Mayor Ulrich is going to make a special presentation to our outgoing mayor, John Brown, and his wife Denise. Under normal rules of procedure, the ship is prepared to dock, or we will say it did dock, and the new ship leader is onboard. So, I personally want to say thank you to Mayor Brown. He'll always be mayor. I was told a long time ago by an old timer who was a mayor of Millcromell for many, many years that he will have that title forever. I had that title, but I didn't really have it. And it's not a bad title. So, Denise, it's been a pleasure with you. We work good as a ship. Thanks, friend.
I'll be around, bud.
I know.
For those that don't know, the Browns and I go back thirty years. And I'll share the story, because what do you probably come from, myself or the mayor? But the one night, when I was still coroner, I was working in Schmokene Police Station. And in comes a newly sworn-in officer, just finished his academy. And I know I have a bad habit, I like to chew tobacco. So, I'm in there, and in comes John and Denise, and they're like, oh, you know, everybody explained who it was. I meet them, and John has this pouch. And I thought, oh, another guy. So, I looked at it and said, oh, here, do you want to try some? So, I said, sure. So, I reach in this pouch, curl it up, and I put it in my mouth. It was the worst thing I ever ate in my life. It wasn't chewing tobacco, it was seaweed. So, that's how John and I started off, and I knew then we were gonna be great friends. And thirty years later, we are. I just want to say something. You know, when people transition into a new position, you see a lot of bickering and fighting. When I won the election, that next day, John Brown had me in, I had the schedule of everything going on. He took me by the hand and took me to every meeting, everything he could think of, to try and make things go smoother. And yes, it was to help me, but through that time, I knew how much he loves the city and Denise as well. But I really started seeing it. And this is bittersweet, because I'll tell you what, they're fantastic people. We all know what Denise has accomplished in the city, all her programs that she did, everything. Don't you do it. Okay. And I love them both to death, and to the fact that they have both agreed, since I am single, for Denise to stay on as First Lady. I am a First Lady. But I wanted to do something for both of them. And you know, you think about plaques, resolutions, and everything. And it was something that John said to me that made me think of this to give to them. We know that if they... And I know he won't be sentimental on this, but they decided they are going to move out into the country. And it was touching when he told me, he said, thirty years, my wife stood by me, lived in Schmokene so I could be a police officer. In these six years, between council and mayor, it's her turn now. I need to give back to her what she wanted, because she loves the country. So, I mean, you look at the true love between them, it's just phenomenal. And then I thought about it. Well, they're gonna be going over in the country, but Schmokene's always gonna be their home. And I wanted to do something special in my first act, and I couldn't think of anything better than I want to present both of them with the key to the city, because they know where home is, and they can always come back, because this is their home. And I also thought, knowing John, he'll probably lose his key, but at least Denise will have one. I love you both.
I can't, I'm a slave.
Look what I can take it off to get a kiss.
But I love you both.
And I want you to remember, Schmokene is your home.
I can't call you Doc anymore. I do this with Raymond all the time, it's chief of layer now.
Yeah, no, it's Doc.
Oh my golly, my First Lady. I want you to...
This is your home. You have to come up on your lunch break every now and then, or every day for an hour.
But I know you guys want to come up, but...
Well, I'll wait until you come up.
Alright. But thank you guys for everything.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all for bearing with you while I did that.
Thank you.
Alright, now, clear them?
Yep.
Ready to start?
Yes.
Alright, at this time, I would like to call to order the City of Schmokene Reorganization Meeting, January 3rd, 2022. And it was to begin at five, and so we'll continue on. So, being that we called that to meeting to order, I would now like to ask that we would all stand and please say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please remain standing. There will be the God Bless America, the sun, and the Star-Spangled Banner, right?
Right after.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, see, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? Were the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Yet wait for the land of the free and the home of the brave! God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairie, to the ocean wide with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home.
That was performed by Amanda Krebs and her lovely daughter, Stephanie St. Kevin.
Amanda.
I did it already. So, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
For those of you that want to observe, the city is now going to reorganize their government, which is short and sweet.
Very slight, okay?
Yep.
Yeah, we're gonna make room. They're gonna sit, they're gonna sit here.
What do you think, would you rather upstairs or down here?
Yeah, okay. Let's go upstairs. Are the lights on?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go upstairs. Okay, we'll go upstairs.
Okay, we're gonna continue the reorganization meeting scheduled for January third, two thousand twenty-two. Under correspondence. We accept the letter of decline was received from Doreen Anis. Declining the Controller's position. Position that she was elected to in November twenty twenty-one. Do I have a motion to accept this?
So move.
Second.
Okay, on the question. Rocco. Mr. Rowden.
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer.
Yes.
I'm still in the mode from the others that were sitting at the table last week. Mr. Laschinsky.
Yes.
Okay, and Mayor Olick.
Yes.
The motion carries. I do have the letter for what it's worth. Declining the Controller's position.
You're going to take the way and then do this thing.
Yes.
Okay.
For anybody, I have a few. If you wanna follow us, this is very short, this is gonna be quick.
Yeah, we are. Next would be the under the, under the swearing in. Mr. Slavy, have all the certificates been turned in to you?
Yes, they have been.
Okay, are they all valid?
Yes, they are.
Okay, and I have a motion to accept those.
Motion.
The election.
So motion.
Oh, to accept our certificates that were signed by the commissioners. That we are authorized.
They have to be accepted by city council. So there's a motion by Mr. Laschinsky, seconded by Mr. Rowden. On the question.
On the question.
All those in favor, please signify by setting a nine.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. If everyone, please turn your cell phones off.
Next, request a motion to appoint Attorney Edward Greco as a solicitor. With a retainer fee of twelve hundred dollars per month, plus a seventy-five dollar an hour attorney fee when needed. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Second. Is there anything on the question?
Rocco, Rocco, Mr. Rowden.
Yes.
Mr. Laschinsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer.
Yes.
And Mayor Olick.
Yes.
Congratulations to Attorney Greco. You may have a seat with us, sir. I'm sorry. Okay, so then we. Under new business.
Under new business, we request a motion to nominate Doreen Anis. To fill the council vacancy by the resignation of Jennifer Zidell. For the remaining two years of her term. Second. Okay, anything on the question?
Mr. Laschinsky.
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Rowden.
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer.
Yes.
And. No, no. Okay. And Mayor Olick.
Yes.
At this late time, we would like to ask Mrs. Anis to come forward to be sworn in. I state your name.
I, Doreen Anis.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitu- and the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of this commonwealth.
Of this commonwealth.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Say it again.
Thank you.
Would you like to join us?
Yes.
Oh, she's the middle one, okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you would please excuse us, we're gonna have an executive session for about five minutes.
Joe, don't get the executive session off.
Yeah, yeah. Come back for you.
Boy, yeah, you can hide one. Yeah, they're on their phone too.
I saw Javi, he said, well, he said, why is that?
Yeah.
Twenty three years. So that's why the story. Maybe that's why I did not think I could work on these things.
Yes, yes, once we know. It's a monster.
She was like, I'm waiting for you. She tried to believe you.
Okay, well, we convene executive session was for personnel matter and we went out at 5:40 PM came back around 5:51 PM. And we'll continue on now with the meetings. Next would be the requi- I request a motion to nominate a council member as Director of Accounts and Finances?
Nominate Doreen Anis.
I'll second that.
Is there anything on the question?
Yeah. Roll call.
Mr. Rowden?
Yes.
Mrs. Anis?
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
And Mr. Lashinsky?
Yes.
I'll get used to this.
Does the mayor give a vote?
We'll give him a chance to. The mayor?
Oh, yes.
Mayor Olrich? Okay, I gotta tell you before we move on, just this will just take a second, okay? When when Mayor Brown took office, it took it took a few meetings to get used to. You can ask John how many times I referred to him as Mayor Milbrandt. Get one to the ribs.
Request a motion to nominate a council member to directors of parks and buildings?
Nominate Barbara Moyer.
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Mr. Lashinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowden?
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Anis?
Yes.
And Mayor Olrich?
Yes. Almost.
Almost.
Request a motion to nominate a council member for Director of Public Works?
Nominate Councilman Lashinsky.
I'll second that.
Anything on the question? Roll call.
Mrs. Anis?
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
Mr. Lashinsky?
I'm staying.
Mr. Rowden?
Yes.
And Mayor Olrich?
Yes.
Request And request a motion to nominate a council member for the Director of Public Safety?
I'd nominate Councilman Scott Rowden.
I'll second that.
Okay, on the question? Roll call.
Mrs. Anis?
Yes.
Mrs. Moyer?
Yes.
Mr. Lashinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowden?
I'm staying.
And Mayor Olrich?
Yes.
Four yeas, one abstention.
Motion carries.
Okay, the solicitors advising me that despite the fact that this is a reorganization meeting, I should allow anyone in the audience to make a comment, if they wish.
How soon will a new controller be appointed?
Within thirty.
Within thirty, in a
Thirty days?
The vacancy, yeah, thirty days.
Thirty days, okay. And I'll be a very much
Mayor Olrich, could you announce why we had the executive session? Because I missed that.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone have anything?
At this time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move.
On the question?